It's nine o'clock, time to conduct the business of the commissioners for County Wayne. We'd like to remind everyone to silence your cell phones or either cut them off. At this time, I will open the meeting with our invocation. Your Honor, Father, thank you for today. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for giving us as a governing board of the County Wayne to make the decisions that pertain to the citizens of Wayne County and leading, guiding us in making the right Just ask that we can be in agreement on what we do as leaders of this great county. We also ask that you be with the leader of our state and our great nation, that they will make the right decisions. We ask that you be with our men and women in uniforms, be with the ones that are deployed away from their families, be with our first responders, as they put so much on the line each day to protect us here at home. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Everyone has a copy of the agenda. Do we have any minutes of the December 15, 2020 meeting? Does anyone have any seen anything that the minutes would not be approved by? Do I have a motion we approve the minutes?
So moved.
I have a motion. All in favor, show a sign right hand. Thank you. Discussion of agenda, Mr. Honeycutt.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We would like to remove number six from the consent agenda at this time.
Any other changes?
No, sir.
Does any of the board members have anything they need to add to the agenda? If not, we will go into our first.
Make a motion.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we remove out of number six?
So moved.
All in favor, show a sign of right hand. Motion carries. Okay, now can we go into the first public hearing? Okay, we're going, everybody have a public hearing to receive public comment on proposed incentive for Project Daffodil, Sanctuary Systems LLC in the town of Fremont. The public hearing is now open. Anyone have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'd like to make sure Mark Pope, Mark is our regional economic developer for the GTP, Lenore, Green, and Wayne Counties. We don't have, I don't know what the right word in the group is yet, but I do want to thank him for the work that he has done on this project. I want to thank Commissioner Acock as well, when she was the town manager in the town of Fremont. I think Mayor Flowers is here as well.
And you have three more commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi. Good to see you. We appreciate y'all coming.
Yeah, Mr. Spivey, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Reed.
We're so glad that y'all are here, and it is a good day for the town of Fremont. I also appreciate the opportunity for the ribbon cutting and the announcement. I thought that was a really, really good day and a very interesting trip, but I think it has started really some good things for Fremont. And with that said, I'll turn it over tomorrow.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
So I want to kind of take you back, and I know we've got some new faces, some that I've met, some that we only met a few times, so we'll kind of walk through the announcement. It was a great announcement before Christmas. We had a Christmas present early in Fremont, but Sanctuary Systems, and I re-parted the press release just so you're familiar with what was, what happened and how well we did that. So a lot of good folks worked together to pull that project together in Fremont and a lot of good things. So just going back to the press release on December 10, 2020. Sanctuary Systems LLC, a developer and marketer of fiber technology and non-woven materials for health and medical filtration, thermal insulation products will create 118 jobs at a new facility in the town of Fremont. Local officials will be announcing today. The project brings a capital investment of $4.9 million to Wayne County. Sanctuary Systems and NC State University Startup Company develop specialty fibers and non-woven materials for applications in markets that include consumer products, beauty products, apparel, filtration products, acoustics, and health and medical products. Monique's products are high-quality face coverings and other personal protective equipment. "We are very excited to welcome Sanctuary Systems LLC to Wayne County," said NC House Majority Leader John Bell. "This project is a big deal for our local economy. It will bring good jobs and critical new investments to our region. I want to thank everyone who helped make it happen." "This is great news for Wayne County, and our economic development team has done a great job getting this wrapped up," NC Senator Jim Perry said. "These jobs are impactful on the economy and rural North Carolina. We appreciate adding Sanctuary Systems as a corporate citizen and for the impact these jobs will have on our economy." "Sanctuary Systems will add a variety of positions with the expansion, including machine operators, tenders and setters, salespersons, production and administrative support. Salaries for the new positions will average $41,000, Wayne County's current overall average wage of $38,401. The company's new presence will create 4.84 million in annual payroll impact for the community." "We saw tremendous opportunity for our operation in Fremont and Wayne County and are excited to work with these communities," said Dr. Harry Barnes, owner and president of the company. "Support from the town of Fremont, Wayne County, North Carolina Southeast Region, and Department of Commerce has been wonderful. We look forward to growing jobs and further investments of our local, of our new location." "To add to local benefits, the company received a grant from the state's Building Reuse Program. Earlier that day, NC Rural Infrastructure Authority approved Wayne County's request for $500,000 in funds to support the reuse of a 60,000-square-foot building in Fremont. Despite the pandemic, our department's Rural Economic Development Division and the RIA have worked closely with local leaders this year to successfully facilitate opportunities for economic growth," said Commerce Secretary Anthony Copeland. "With the projects approved today, rural areas of North Carolina have new resources to attract jobs, support business expansion, and prepare sites for future development." That was a quote by me, but we'll let that go. Just wanted to thank our partners. We had the North Carolina Southeast, Duke Energy, the State Community College Systems, Department of Commerce, and Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. So that was the announcement on December 10. Again, the highlights, 118 new jobs by Sanctuary Systems, approximately $5 million in investment. And our competition, I always like to talk about the competition. Alabama was one of the companies, that's where the company is based out of. They actually looked at a facility in Tennessee and then the building in Fremont. So we're excited that Eastern North Carolina, Fremont, won out on that project. Brian and his team are in place and they're working, they're hiring folks. Those folks that went to the announcement that day actually got to see some of the product, which is this, this is the actual, one of their products that's being made. Actually, they were there, they had an order of 600, they had to go out that day. So we're very pleased to have Sanctuary Systems in Wayne County. Again, the state incentives was $500,000 in rural center building reuse, $110,500 in community college customized training program dollars. So when we get to our part of it, of course, we have building reuse grants, you had to have a match, so that's the way we do these performance-based agreements. Just to remind you folks, how that works, it's based off the revenues that are generated by the capital investment brought in by the company to the county. Of course, in the state of North Carolina, you cannot abate taxes, but you can develop performance-based agreements tied to jobs and tied to investment and give them a portion of those taxes after they've been paid back on a yearly basis. So we'll track those as they go forward. So the performance grant agreement that you have in front of you has that Wayne County will get back $100,000 in performance-based incentives to the company based over a five-year period. So we'll look at those each year, we'll look at the taxes are paid each year, we'll look at the performance, that the jobs are being created, and there is a formula in the incentive agreement. You'll look each year what they've got to do, and if they've done those things, then we'll pay those incentives. It can also be prorated, so they can have a year where it may be slow and catch it up next year, but the grant does end in, it's 2025, let's make sure, 2026, 2025, I was wrong. So that's when the incentive agreement would end, so they would have to have done all those things to have gotten all the incentives out there. Any questions? The incentive agreement is pretty much self-explanatory, it does tile, holds them to it, and creates jobs and investment. Can I answer any questions?
Just a comment, like you said earlier, they are up and running, and in fact, they are already running, what, three shifts? They're a long ways from being at capacity of what they can do, but for a business to start up and start with three shifts from the get-go, it sounds pretty promising.
They had two machines in boxes that I had, the day we had the announcement, so I did get a chance to go look at those. So we've had a meeting with Duke Energy about upgrades out there to the building already, because they'll need some of that for capacity, and so that's, those talks are underway already too. So, yeah, very good. They'll have five lines is what the predictions are as they get up and running, so they'll have five lines in the building.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just as a point of clarification, and that is, on your chart here, let's take 2022, where annual job increase of 22, total jobs in the county, 118. In that particular year, if they do not attain that, in fact, if all of a sudden their job force is, I'm going to pick the number 80, so it's less than the year before, then they would not qualify that year for that incentive.
You'd prorate it back down.
Prorate back down.
They could, you know, get incentives that year, but it wouldn't be the full amount that we've got in control.
Okay. So there is a provision, they've got to maintain that, and if not, it's prorated back down.
Right.
Well, we've heard stories where people hire a bunch of folks, get a big incentive, and then all of a sudden they lay them off and they still get the incentive. So we just wanted to make sure we've got protections in there, and more or less for the public to hear that those protections are there.
Exactly. Yeah, we kind of hold them to it. You've got to do what you say you're going to do if you don't get incentives.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Pope, Mr. Gurley, when we were there at ribbon cutting, was discussing with Brian about the internet service. I understand that they need higher-speed internet services. Is this something that they're, we're looking to help with, or they need higher-speed internet than what they're capable of having there?
You know, we're facing that issue all over rural North Carolina. So there are some avenues, you know, with the broadband stuff, you know, we've talked to Senator Perry, and I know Brian and them have talked to Senator Perry and John Bell also. So we'll have to try to see what we can get there. We'll work on that, you know, we've got other spots in Eastern North Carolina, the region that we can work on that same thing altogether, so we'll work on that.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience have any comments to make? Come up to the speaker. Mr. Flowers, please.
On behalf of the Town Board of Alderman and the town itself, we want to thank everyone that was participating in this historic moment for us. We have sat in northern Wayne County with very little industrial growth, and we are extremely excited every time we get on 117 and ride by, all because of the hard work that all of you and those that have supported you have done, and we just want to express our appreciation for everything you have done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to be around for a little while?
I can be.
Hang around for a little while if you can, please. Anyone else have a comment before we close the public hearing?
Good morning, all. Excuse me, Keith Spivey, I'm one of the Aldermen for the District of, Town of Fremont. In addition to the mayor's comments, I want to personally and publicly thank Barbara Acock, because I'm quite sure a lot of this was done before she became county commissioner. I've worked with Barbara, we probably started about the same time in the town of Fremont. She was working as the administrator, and I was working as a step-grand administrator. And I've seen her tenacity and her, if I could use this word, doggone-ness by not letting stuff go, and I just appreciate it, and because of that, we are where we are today. So thank you, Ms. Barbara, and thank you, Commissioners, for all that you have done to help the town of Fremont grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Call this public hearing closed. Next public hearing is at 9:30, so can we handle a couple of things?
Mr. Chairman, we can take action on this matter today if you want to.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Commissioner Acock if she would make the motion to approve this.
I would be glad to. Before I do, I would like to thank my previous board here, Ms. Artis, Ms. Jones, Mr. Spivey, and especially the mayor. They provided the openings for me to do some of the things I did, and I just want to thank them. I miss them every day. And I would personally like to make this motion for the goals that have been set forth by Mr. Pope here and the guidelines that we've got here for Sanctuary Systems to receive this money as presented here on the agenda.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, show a sign of right hand. Also, I'd like to thank everyone that was involved in it, because this means a lot for Wayne County, especially northern Wayne County. I just hope that this is a beginning of something that's going to be greater.
Mr. Chairman, given that we have a few moments before the next scheduled hearing, you could do the appointment committee presentation and then come back to the public hearing.
Okay, all right. Mr. Gurley, I understand that you do have some.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. The appointment committee would like to recommend the following appointments and reappointments, and each is in the form of a motion. Reappoint Barry Gray to the Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority Board of Directors. Appoint Sheila Exum to the Wayne County Tourism Development Alliance, as recommended by the Wayne County Tourism Development Alliance. Appoint the following to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Program, Dr. Marshall Manning, Rohan Srinath, Dr. Brenda Weiss, Colleen Kozinski. Reappoint the following to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Program, Chief Mike West, Sheriff Larry Pierce, Matthew Delbridge, Jerry Burns, Brooke Mickelson, Kimberly McGuire, Carol Bowden, Marlene Hubbell, Jordan Wildman, Dustin Pittman, Beth Heath, Selena Whirl, Mary Ann Dudley, Felicia Brown, Sydney O'Heal, Beverly Bell, H. Leroy Lewis, and Branny Vickery, and that's in form of a motion.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor of the recommendations of the appointment committee? Show a sign of right hand. Motion carries.
Also, Mr. Chairman, we have two more. Would like to appoint Mr. Mike Acock for Fire Commissioner for the Thoroughfare Fire District, effective immediately to replace the late Mr. Louis Harry, who, as recommended by the Fire Marshal, and that's in form of a motion.
I have a motion on the floor that we appoint Mr. Mike Acock to the Thoroughfare Fire Department Tax District Board. Any discussion? We have a motion from the appointment committee. All in favor, show a sign of right hand.
Also, Mr. Chairman, we have one more.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that your name, or? Mr. Williams?
I'm sorry.
Can you vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying to see everybody's hands from the partitions, my apologies.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more. Also, the reappointment of Dr. Anthony Hamm to the Board of Directors of Wayne Health Corporation, as recommended by the Wayne Health Corporation Board, and that's in form of a motion as well.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor of the appointment committee's recommendation? Show a sign of right hand. Unanimous.
And that's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could we get the appointment committee to possibly give us a list of those upcoming boards and commission appointments so that we, as commissioners, could be reviewing them and possibly make recommendations?
Yes, so they were actually included, the ones from December 15th were included in your agenda packets for your review over the two-week period. The two that he added on were recommendations that came in afterwards, one because of a death of a fire commissioner, so it was an immediate need, and the other was a delay from the Board of Directors to getting that information to us, so we had to kind of throw that in.
I understand. You misunderstood the request. Now, that is, if you'd give us a list of the boards and commissions and when there would be appointments that would be opening up, i.e., example, a hospital board, there is a position available and it'd be opening up on April 30 of next year, you know, just to give us an idea of what board and commissions and when those appointments would be opening up.
She's working on them now.
Okay.
So she'll get them out.
Okay.
We've got about five minutes to go ahead and, we can go ahead and act on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor that we accept the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, show a sign of right hand. The next item, do we have time to?
Probably not.
We are back in session. We have another public hearing scheduled for 9:30 to receive public comment on the request to rezonate 1.22 acres at 439 and 453 Ruskin Road. The public hearing is now open. Anyone have any comments? Mr. Gray?
All right, I'll go over the information on this case quickly. This is a rezoning request from RA 20, which is residential agricultural 20, to light industry. The site's 1.22 acres. It is north of Georgia Pacific, about six tenths of a mile north of the Georgia Pacific site down Ruskin Road. There is a, if you look at the aerial photo that I provided, and it's also on the screen, across the street, these photos were taken in 2017, there is a silver utility facility across the street from this site, and you can see that the location highlighted in yellow or darker yellow on the screen of where this request is. We have sent this to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base for their comments, and they state they have no issues with compatibility with their operations. And this hearing has been advertised, we've posted the property, sent notices to adjacent property owners, and advertised in the newspaper, and the planning board has reviewed this request and recommends approval. And with that, I would like to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Did we receive any comments from the residents here, these houses here, which is going to be very close to this light industrial?
I have not received any comments. And that first house that you see, there is a, what appears to be a, this kind of off the screen, the business behind it, but there appears to be a trucking business there as well nearby.
Any other questions for Mr. Gray? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this public hearing?
No one signed up, so.
No one signed up? We have no other questions. What's the pleasure of the board?
We need to pause the public hearing.
That's right. Okay. I declare this public hearing now closed. And we can't act on this, Mr. Parker? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we approve as presented.
I have a motion on the floor to approve as presented and the recommendations of the planning board. There's no other discussion? All show a sign of right hand. Okay, on our new business, Presentation Emergency Operations Plan, EOP, summary by Emergency Management Coordinator, Aaron Striker.
Good morning, missionaries, and happy new year.
Happy new year, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. So when I started back on August 1, 2019, one of the first, the first project I undertook was gave my hands on the current county's emergency operations plan. And what this is, is it's what the county does during a disaster. It's our disaster plan. The document, excuse me, the document that I found was in major need of an upgrade, so after the, for the past year and a half, that's what I've been doing. We took a document that was probably a couple hundred pages, and that has evolved into a document that's now about 720 pages. I've tried to get, instead of giving you a 720-page document, I've tried to break it down in, you know, the different sections. So the first part, the So the first part, the basic plan, that's the public plan, that's what we posted out to, to our website, and it contains demographic information, historical data about disasters that have happened in the county before. This also will cover some of our emergency, that's actually the second section. So the basic plan, the notification process, how we go about notifying different agencies and different personnel regarding a disaster. So the second part are, the second part is actually our incident and planning annexes, and those deal with very specific events. So we have a plan for either riverine flooding, sheltering, any type of event that you could think of, that's what we're trying to put into that. And then the last part, the continuity of operations plan, is worst-case scenario. This is, this is where the most amount of work from the different county departments came in, because this is their individual plan for their department, how they would continue day-to-day operations if for some reason they cannot work out of their facility. So we'll use the tax department on the first floor. Something happens to the tax department, they cannot occupy that space, what's the plan to get the tax department back up to as close to normal day-to-day operations as possible? So that's also why this plan has taken about a year and a half to complete, because you should all have, what's the distribution list? Those are the parties that could potentially be involved in managing a disaster, responding to a disaster. So it's me reaching out to all of those folks, all of those individuals and those organizations to get this plan updated and where it needs to be. I think it's also important to note that this is a living document, it can be updated and changed as needed. Say, somebody comes up with a new way to handle flood, we'll review that, make sure those that respond to flooding agree with it, and then we can update this plan. So there is a state requirement of an annual review, which I have to do, and then make sure that everybody that's involved with this plan is like, hey, here's your portion of the plan, if this still makes sense to you, is this still the way you want to do it? And then we have the self-imposed requirement that once every four years, this will be re-presented to the Board of Commissioners. So we're not asking for this to be adopted today, because it is a very long document, we're just having to present it, and then the second meeting in February for it to be adopted, so in that time, if anybody had any questions about specific parts, we can get those questions answered for you.
Any question for?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Striker, when was the last revision on this document? You're saying it?
I actually don't know.
Didn't have a revision date on the previous document?
No, no, ma'am.
Oh, we have one on this.
What's that?
A revision date.
Not on the last document, so this one, I've, this was almost, almost created from scratch, so that's, just took, the last document we had was actually about 20 individual documents that were anywhere between two and three pages, so I kind of used that, but then I ended up scrapping it, started over to get everything that we needed, because in here, we'll have North Carolina General Statute 166 Alpha, which is the state law that governs emergency management, so going off of that, actually worked with Lenore County, they helped me a lot with creating this, but this document, because the old one was so outdated, ended up just basically starting from scratch with this. So there is a, in here, there is a record of change, so right now, there's just one, so the one that I'm doing right now, it just says complete update, so, and going forward, anytime there are changes, that will be documented in here.
Good deal.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Mr. Doherty.
I think you said it was a 750-page document.
Yes, sir.
At what point is that going to be made available for review by the commissioners? Because I also think I heard you say that we're going to be voting on this in February.
End of February, yes, sir.
So if we are to review 750 pages, I'd like to have access to that pretty quickly.
Yes, sir.
Secondly, I assume that that has been referred over to council for them to review as well, but we're going to let you read it first. As I expressed to you already, my only concerns is any expansion that there may be here in authority that would restrict movements, or activities, or any other freedoms of our citizens, that is my primary concern.
Yes, sir.
I understand we have to have a plan, we have to have a written policy as such, but I certainly want to make sure that we are not expanding the role of government to restrict citizens' rights.
I understand, that's right, and there hasn't been other than what is already in place. The reason the state of emergency is a little bit longer than other counties is to give us the flexibility, depending on the event, depending on the incident, to do temporary protective measures, not only for the population, but also for our first responders, and that state of emergency, as I explained earlier, that can be terminated by the chairman or by a majority vote of the board.
Well, like I say, devil's in the details, and if you've got 750 pages, there could be underlying things, just want to make sure.
Yes, sir, and we'll be able to get this out to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gerley.
You want to go ahead first?
No, go ahead. The, so I guess this addresses the issues that we've had in the past, and I know you won't hear, but several of us were during the floods. There's been a many a time that our first responders have been put in harm's way to go retrieve somebody that was asked, asked, told that the water was rising, and they never left, then all of a sudden, they start calling, and then we end up having to send, of course, that's what we do, but that is addressed to a point in this plan.
With the state of emergency, yes, if you want to put in, and that's why I've been working very hard the past year, or past year and a half, when we do have, we'll use the flooding and weather events, getting that information out to people, working with Public Affairs, those emails that I'm hoping you all got said, hey, there's a storm coming, river levels are going up, is to try to get that information out there, be proactive to avoid that scenario that our first responders are not going to have to go out and get those folks.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
But I just want to thank you for working on this, you know, because me and Mr. Gerley have been involved with the first responder side of it for many, many years, and in the past, we've shot from the hip a whole lot, and now we've got, we've got a plan now. Sometimes you have to divvy a little bit from that plan, but at least we've got a plan now. And we've been very fortunate in the past, most of the time when we were shooting from the hip, we hit our target, but we've been very fortunate on that. But now we have a plan, and all of the organizations will be involved. I'm hearing very good comments from some of the agencies that they are getting the information now that we have never got before. Some of it they can use, some of it doesn't pertain to them, but you, you know, everybody's getting it, and it's, they're up to them to go by it, or at least they, at least they know what's going on. I mean, that's just like, you know, right now, the average citizen doesn't know that the river's going to get pretty high between now and the weekend, and in the past, the only way we were, well, I'm not going to say the only way, but a lot of time, the only way we were getting information was from, from the public television stations or from the networks, but now, they're getting the information, you're getting the information out to them on a timely manner, and the updates on a timely manner, and I think that's something that, you know, we're having to get used to, because we're getting the information that we've, that we've never had before.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I do want to thank Aaron, I also want to thank Brian Taylor as well. It really was, really the first task that we kind of charged Aaron with when he was hired a year and a half ago, that and a sheltering plan for emergencies. Now we are having the plans that are written down, and it's like you said, we have that playbook now, but there's been a lot of work that's been going through this. I do want to thank Carol Bowden as well. Carol has read, I think, all 700 pages as well.
Carol can't be grammatically correct.
Grammatically correct, and on top of all of her clerk work as well, appreciate her willingness to do that, but it really is an in-depth, really good document that we can build while moving towards the future, and I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, and there was a lot of people that put a lot of work into this, it wasn't just me, it was folks like Carol, the support from county leadership, as well as the different department heads as well, giving their input and working with us.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. Mr. Striker, one request on this, as being a town administrator, you know, a lot of times, this information, it would be nice if this link was sent to the town administrators, you know, our small towns here, because some might not know where to look.
The basic plan, or what I have with me today, this, once we get everything approved, will go on to the county website, and we'll get it out, because this is the public information part of it, and that will get, here it is, here's how, here's how you can get it, so if Fremont has a town website, you want it posted on that, that'll be provided, so you guys can get it on there as well.
That would be good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gerley, one more thing, we are going to have training, per se, on how everything's implemented through the leadership roles of the Fire Service, EMS, sheriff, and all that, correct?
Yes, sir, actually, one of the big projects we're working, or big project for myself for 2021, is some more training, so folks in leadership position kind of understand their, their role during an emergency, and how the different organizations.
Work together.
Work together and respond together. I think that's a, that's a barrier that needs to be overcome, it's nobody's fault, people just don't know.
That's right. Well, that's what I was saying, a 750-page document is great, but if you don't know your role, and within that 750 pages, there's nothing but a bunch of papers, so.
Plans are worthless, but planning is indispensable.
Got you, thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And also, you know, the general public doesn't realize, when we say a disaster or emergency plan, what, who is involved? I mean, most people just think first responders, well, that's my EMS, fire, law enforcement, but that's not the case. I mean, the health department's involved, DSS is involved, Highway Patrol, all the PDs, Seymour Johnson, I mean, everybody is at the table when we have a disaster.
Organizations like the United Way.
United Way, Salvation Army, Red Cross, I mean, everybody is at the table, so this is, it's a pretty big task when we have, when we have an emergency, and as long as we've got Nus River, we're going, we're going to continue to have, you know, we live 85 miles from the coast, I mean, we're going to have hurricanes, we're going, we're going to have floods, you know, we're going to have tornadoes, so, but everybody is at the table when we, when a disaster is declared in Wayne County.
But all those, all those agencies, you know, you know that they need to know that there's one person or a group that's in charge.
Right.
Yes, sir, and that's one thing we're trying to lay it out, is that command and control during an emergency, how information flows up and down that chain of command, where the decisions, at what level can certain decisions be made? There's some decisions that can be made at my level, there's some decisions that have to be made at y'all's level, and that's what we're trying to spell out.
Any other questions?
This is not an action item, we will come back later after you get everything finalized and.
Yes, sir. So we'll get this all out to you for whatever questions you have, so just make sure you can get a hold of the entire plan, take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, like Aaron said, you know, this was, this was all of our staff involved, Aaron, the Fire Marshal, 911 call center, everybody is involved in getting this plan put together.
Okay, motion to approve the award to request for being contracted cleaning and janitorial supplies to Seven Oaks Supply.
Mr. Chairman, we did have some discussion about this during our agenda workshop. If there's any additional questions that you may have, Noel is here as well.
Mr. Chairman, the only comment or question that I would have, and that is, that I would want to make sure that this company is put on notice to make recommendations for non-general label products that we might be available at a discount.
Mr. Doherty, we actually have already had a meeting with them, and once, sorry? Once the award, once it's awarded, they are actually going to come in and take an inventory of everything we have here at the county and give us comparable alternatives.
Which should save us a lot, a lot more money.
That's what we're hoping.
Okay, thank you.
One question, Mr. Chairman, are they going to keep our MSDS sheets provided and updated and everything?
Absolutely, they will, they'll provide us with those for each item that we purchase.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, this is an action item, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract as recommended for cleaning and janitorial supplies to Seven Oaks Supply.
Okay, any, any other questions?
I would also, you know, just make sure that they understand, this is a one-year contract, so there's nothing binding that this will be renewed after a year or so, you know, the ball's on their end of the court, I mean, they've got to prove herself, because we know that, you know, we've always been able to get supplies when we needed them, and, you know, if they can't perform, we will address this at this time next year.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? All in favor, show your sign of right hand. Motion carries. Okay, number, item number three, motion to approve temporary personnel policy regarding paid COVID-19 sick leave.
Mr. Chairman, in, how can, in the break, Andrew may be able to give us some, you know, background of how we got to this point as well?
So since we have some new board members and we have a little bit more time to discuss, I thought it might be helpful to go back. So if you recall, back in March of 2020, Congress passed the Families First Coronavirus Act, FF-CRA, that entitled, that granted two new leave benefits to employees in the United States. So you had employee or emergency paid sick leave and emergency FMLA. So emergency paid sick leave were for employees that subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine order, employee that has been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine due to COVID-19, the employee is experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 and seeking a medical diagnosis, the employee is caring for an individual who is subject to an order, a quarantine order, or the employee is caring for a son or daughter whose daycare school was closed at the time. So those were the five things that an employee could qualify for emergency paid sick leave. Along with that, in the FF-CRA, for the first time, you got paid emergent, or paid FMLA. Now, that's never happened before. That was specifically for people whose children, guardians, foster children, what have you, their school or their preschool were closed. So they got 12 weeks of paid FMLA. Usually FMLA is unpaid, and you have to use your personal time. The first two weeks of that was paid at a full rate, because you qualify for your emergency paid sick leave, and then the remaining was paid at two-thirds their average wage. So that's what the FF-CRA entitled all employees to throughout the United States. Now, emergency or first responders under the act were exempt, so it was up to an employee, whether, which employees they wanted to designate as a first responder. We chose, and correct me if I'm wrong, we chose EMS, Sheriff's Department, DSS, and Health Department. And I think those were the four, because those always have to be there. DSS always had to do social work, you know, always had to interact, income maintenance, EMS obviously had to go on calls, Sheriff's Office obviously had to go on calls, and then Health Department was responding to COVID. We did not have to extend any of these benefits to them. We, however, chose to extend limited paid sick leave to these employees. So that would be items one through three. That would be if the employee was subject to an order, if the employee was advised to stay home due to COVID-19, or if they were seeking a diagnosis. So for those three reasons, we went above and beyond FF-CRA. So that's the background. That all expired December 31st. And as you're probably aware, Congress did not extend that. Now, there was some legislation that was passed, specifically the stimulus checks and things of that nature, but it did not extend these two leave benefits. So as it stands now, anyone who was out on emergency FMLA or emergency paid sick leave as of December 31st were no longer entitled to those benefits. So those employees were, were cut off. What we decided to do is not extend the federal program completely. So the proposal that we have in front of you does not extend emergency FMLA. It does not extend emergency paid sick leave. What it does is it creates a new temporary leave policy for Wayne County, what we have called paid COVID-19 sick leave. So it does not extend the federal program, because if you chose to extend the federal program, you have to extend it totally. You'd have to extend emergency paid sick leave, emergency paid sick leave as it is in the FF-CRA. So what this does is we have provided limited sick leave benefits, paid sick leave benefits to employees. So as you can see, it's only if an employee is subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine order, the employee has been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine due to COVID-19 concerns, or the employee is experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 and seeking a diagnosis. So under those three circumstances, that's when they would qualify for Wayne County paid COVID sick leave. So it's not emergency paid sick leave as defined by the FF-CRA. It's something different. We have written this in such a way that if somebody has used up, and back up, emergency paid sick leave, you get two weeks of benefits. So a regular employee, you get 80 hours. For non-traditional, there's a formulary, formula you use to determine what you get paid, but you basically get two weeks. So what we have done is if somebody exhausted all their emergency paid sick leave under the FF-CRA, they would no longer be entitled to this new benefit. Again, this is a voluntary program that the county would be creating. So if you chose to extend that benefit, that would be within your power to do so. We have just done this because that is traditionally what we've seen, what most employers are doing, that if you've already used up all your two weeks of emergency paid sick leave, you wouldn't be entitled to it. A little bit of background, the new legislation that was passed and expanded a employer tax deduction for employers who extended this benefit. Now, we aren't entitled to that because we're a public employer. But I pointed it out because I think it was the spirit of the new legislation that employers voluntarily tried to extend some benefits to employees since, obviously, the pandemic is ongoing and there's some concerns that people are still going to get sick. So a couple of other items, as Mr. Parker said, this would be retroactive if passed today to January 1st. So if you had an employee that was on emergency paid sick leave under the FF-CRA, and it ran out on the 31st, but they still had to quarantine past the 1st, so say if they quarantined to the 5th or the 6th, they would still get all their benefits. They'd still be entitled to those two, those two weeks. So as it stands now, they would have to use their own personal leave. And if they didn't have any leave, they'd have to ask for leave without pay, which would have to be approved by the manager. So by extending this, those people that were in limbo after December 31st, it would take care of them. You are not extending emergency paid sick leave. And then the way that it's calculated, we just carry that over from the FF-CRA. That, that doesn't change at all, at all. Since, as the chairman pointed out, the sheriff and the registered deeds are elected officials. Their employees serve at their pleasure. They are, it's totally within their discretion to what extent this, this policy would apply to them. I've spoken with the sheriff, and we're working on a policy right now to implement. So I do know that the deputy, it may not be the exact same policy, but it's going to be very similar. And I did send this to Ms. Quorum, our new registered deeds. I sent it to her last week. I have not heard back, but I was going to follow up today, but my expectation is she would, she would adopt this policy as well. I'm not trying to speak for her, but I know that the previous registered deeds had no problems with allowing her people to fall under the policy. So that's a little bit of background, but, but I would point out, this is completely voluntary. So it can be modified, it can be extended. What we've done now is just extended it to the end of March. I will say in all candor to the board, it's, the policy reads that it shall expire on March 31st unless otherwise extended by a superseding federal, state, or Wayne County policy. So as it's written now, it can be readdressed in March. So if, if not, then, you know, it would expire. The whole caveat to this is there's a new Congress now. In a couple of weeks, there's going to be inauguration. Who knows what the federal law may or may not be? So this policy may not mean anything. There could be new legislation. We don't, we don't know. But this was kind of an effort to extend some benefits to those employees who have not tested positive yet for COVID, but who may still test positive and would no longer receive that emergency paid sick leave benefit that was enacted with the FF-CRA. So that's a little bit more background.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that you've explained it to us, because I thought we were just extending the federal program. And apparently, you know, it's very obvious that we're not. So that, that clarifies it a whole lot for me. And then in the part where it says that it ends on, on what, March 31st, you know, but, but it's already, the word is already in here that it can be, it can be looked at at that time or, or later.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman? What should finish?
Miss Williams.
Yes. During our briefing, Mr. Honeycock, I asked a question pertaining to the mechanisms that were in place. If someone didn't have COVID-19, but they just wanted to, you know, to use that as an excuse, you know, I would hope no one would ever do that, because it's a serious situation. But I'm looking at item three here, and it says, employee is experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 and seeking a medical diagnosis. Would that give them 10 days as well?
The, I think the thought process there would be, we would want you to be tested. So if, you know, that would send you to be tested and, and you would have that sick time to be tested. But you, you are correct. Right now, it does not require a, a positive test to say that, that yes, you qualify or no. If they have the symptoms and they're being tested and we're waiting on the result, you know, if you remember back when testing first started, sometimes it took a week to get testing results back. So, you know, one of the things we have talked about is maybe only doing this based upon positive tests. And then if somebody is waiting for the results, go back and be retroactive to that. So if I'm feeling sick today and I, I want to get tested, did I go home and I quarantine myself, waiting for the results? If it comes back negative, I don't qualify for this additional sick time. But if it came back positive, then I would qualify plus the three days or so that I was waiting on the results to come back.
Yes. Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, so that's not stated in this policy now, though, right?
No, sir.
So what? And I, I guess what I'm trying to get into is, is to try to alleviate somebody from abusing the system.
Yes.
And, you know, basically getting paid for, for nothing. But, I mean, I would assume, of course, you know, I would assume that you would have to test positive to get the, you do not.
We base cutting paste from the, what the federal guidelines were before, and these were what the federal guidelines were.
But Mr. Chairman, you could drive a train through that opening. I mean, think about it. Because you, you're not really stating, if I came down with symptoms of cough, then I could state that I am implementing this policy, go home, take a, schedule a test for two days, have the test, seven days later, get the results of it, and I come back negative. I had the flu, I had a cold, whatever. Under this policy, you all would have to pay that, that 10 days.
Yeah, and, and this is taken directly from the FF-CRA. So if, if you wanted to make it more restrictive, you certainly could. This was
Well, it should have been more restricted before it came to us, because you know good and well that I, for one, am, am looking at this from a standpoint that I have no problem looking after employees. We have to. But at the same time, let's not just open ourselves up to where you could just take advantage of the taxpayer. I mean, and that's what you're doing here. So, and I agree, you just took it right from, but you're talking about copying federal legislation? Think about what I just said, copying federal legislation?
But Commissioner Gurley, to answer your question, we do have people under the FF-CRA, if you actually go, if you are around someone in close contact with a case, you go to a doctor and they recommend that you quarantine, and they give you a note and they bring it to us. Under FF-CRA, you're entitled to paid sick leave, even if you were to test negative. We would, we, under the federal law. Now, you can be more restrictive in your own policy, but yes, that, as written, that's how, that's what would happen under that circumstance.
And Mr. Chairman, if I might point out, with the wisdom of our national leaders in drafting the legislation of the last coronavirus bill, they did not extend this. Do recognize that. They did not extend this. There had to be a reason why they didn't extend it. With that in mind, why would we inject our wisdom over and beyond what the CDC and, because you know good and well the CDC was involved with this? I just can't imagine why we are injecting ourselves in the midst of this. There's sick leave that's available. In fact, I was having a conversation earlier. There are a lot of other infirmities that you get, that you need to isolate yourself from. If you got the flu, you should go home and stay home, because you can spread the flu. I don't know what happened to the flu lately, by the way, but at any rate, because there are no numbers reported in regards to flu. If you in fact have tuberculosis, if you have meningitis, if you have certain diseases, you should be going home. But we're not extending this to them. So we are saying only in these circumstances, and we're going to write it in such a way that you could drive a freight train through it. I, I just have a real, real problem. And the more I talk about it, the more of a problem I have with it. If it is the wisdom of our national leaders not to extend this, why would we, why would we? I would rather give a case-by-case exemption and give the authority to the county manager to look at each case individually, to make some, I'd rather have a, a policy similar to that.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Foster?
Just listen to what you said, first starting with what our national leaders have done. Like you said, a lot of them are leaving office and they're waiting on the new ones to come in. So no different in this board. Some things were waiting to be voted on until the new board came in, you know. So hopefully, that's, maybe they will extend it and it will override whatever we're doing at this point. But the second thing is, you know, we can't, this is the first time we've ever been in this situation. I'm 43 years old. Some in here are a lot older than me, some may be younger. But I'm pretty sure it's the first time we've ever seen this in the history of our lives. So we can't just second-guess anything or say this, that, or the third. We don't know at this point. We don't know what the future holds with this disease. So at one point, they approved this, you know. We're not approving the same exact thing, but we're approving something similar to protect our employees, to give our employees some kind of benefits, just in case, because a lot of them are in, they're in the public sector. They're, they're dealing with people every single day, you know, and you don't, they don't know what they're coming in contact with. They may get it at work, they may get it at home, they may get it at the grocery store. But at that point, you don't want them bringing it to work, because then at that point, they affect, if you're in an apartment with 50 people, 50 people that may get it, now you have to shut that whole entire department down. And as Mr. Gurley said earlier, Duplin County had to shut, shut their entire Sheriff's Department, you know, the secretary and all of that stuff in, in the office down. So, you know, we don't want that to happen here. So let's be on the safe side and say, okay, I mean, I understand that it, it may cost some money, but as Ms. Acot said, we have money in the CARES Act that we have for, that we put in, put in there for pay. So therefore, we're covered on that end as well. So at this point, we're really not losing anything or anything, but we have a lot to gain by putting this policy into effect to keep our employees protected, to keep ourselves protected, and their families or whoever else, because, I mean, this is just, it's just important. Because we don't know what the, what's going to happen over the next 90 days, the next 360 days. We just don't know. Yes, the vaccine is out, but we don't even know if that's going to work yet. So I, I just think that, you know, we have to put all the, everything aside, this, that, and the third, our own personal issues, our own vices or whatever, how we feel about it, and just vote for what's best for our employees at this point. Not us, but what's best for our employees.
Mr. Gurley? Chairman, I, I was under impression, and, and like I said, I don't know what you can and can't make. I mean, I'm in the private sector, so I'm just, I'm having to learn. Is it not, I mean, can you, if somebody's around somebody and they go to the doctor up under, I think, number two or three, whatever it is, can you not, can you not, I'm going to say make, strongly suggest that they get tested? I mean, is that, can you do that or not do that? I mean, can you, can you put that in writing? I'm just, I mean, I'm asking. I don't know.
Is that the Health Department that can, or is that?
Individual employers can require it. At the, at our county level, it may require an act of
I mean, I'm just, I mean, I can see, look, I'm all for protecting our employees and their families and the citizens, for that matter, because they interact, you know, every day with the citizens. But I can see where this can, can get abused to a point. You know, you, you hope you don't have, you know, employees that's abusing the system, but the fact of life is, you know, we live in America. I mean, and that's just, that's just, it is what it is. But I would, I would, I would think that we would want, I mean, if they're around somebody, they might need to stay home until they get their test back. And, I mean, and depending on how outdated the labs are, it might take two days, it might take six days, you know. But there again, which test do you take? Do you take the, the real test where they touch your tonsils, or you take the one that just swabbing your nose? I mean, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I, I mean, I, I'm for doing what's right for our employees, but I got a little, I got a little problem with the background, I guess, or the test part is what I got an issue with. I, I don't know, I don't know what the, I mean, you know, as far as the, I think, I think there should be a positive test for you to, to accrue these benefits.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, what I would like to suggest is, I mean, I like the policy overall. Again, I agree with everyone that the, we need to look after the staff here, but maybe if we could amend item three, employee is experiencing symptoms, because in actuality, if you're not feeling well, you're going to take the test anyway. So if we could amend that item, then I wouldn't have a problem with it. But like Commissioner Daughery said, they're kind of leaving a wide door to go through. So I would suggest that we remove item three, employee is experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 and is seeking a medical diagnosis. Because you're going to seek a diagnosis if you're not feeling well anyway.
So the suggestion, actually, Mr. Parker handed this to me, so we would suggest possibly this might alleviate some concerns. The employee is, is experiencing symptoms of COVID-19, seeking a medical diagnosis, and subsequently test positive for COVID-19. And if you wanted to, that could be the only circumstance that you grant paid sick leave under this. But that, item three would require a positive test.
Neil, I would inter, I would put a or there, because some people test positive without symptoms. And they're still contagious, as is everyone else, even though they don't have any symptoms. You might could have a symptoms and or positive without, something like that. You're not gonna control the spread if they're positive without symptoms, right? But I do think the positive test is a molecular test, a real test, it's pretty.
Can we eliminate two altogether?
If you wanted to, that'd be fine.
And the reason I say that is, it all comes down to this. I have, I really don't have an issue. If we have a county employee that contracts COVID-19 of us compensating him with sick leave, I have no problem with that whatsoever. But I, but we need to restrict it very much, so we ensure that that person, because they had a runny nose or a cough, didn't take advantage of the system. And, and like Commissioner Gurley said, we do live in America, folks. And people will fi- try to find opportunities. Uh, and this does leave, i- if you would restrict it to item three and add the addendum, which ensures that you were actually diagnosed with COVID-19. Now, if you were not and you test negative, then you had to use your sick leave, not ours. Then I have, I, I mean, you've alleviated the concern. And you closed the door.
But if you get, if you do get the virus, then you're compensated.
Correct.
And you protect our other employees in process.
Chair? Excuse, did you say eliminate two, Mr. Gurley, or did you say three?
What now?
Eliminate, I'm sorry, I, I was gonna make your recommendation, that we eliminate two, we leave one and three, but add the addendum that the council has, uh, recommended, that it requires a positive COVID test to be compensated under this program. If not, you would, you would relay back to your standard sick leave and use your standard sick leave.
Read that one more time, Andrew, if you don't mind.
The employee is experience, experiencing symptoms of COVID-19, seeking a medical diagnosis, diagnosis, and subsequently tests positive for COVID-19.
So, they could test positive whether they, they have symptoms or not. So that, but that would still be, I mean, for that matter, they could be around somebody that tested positive, they're gonna get, the biggest thing I think is, but they got to get tested.
Right.
Bottom line. I mean, I, I mean, I think that's the, you know, that's the whole, I think that's the whole issue.
Yeah, you, you've got to provide to the county, your employer, a test showing that you tested positive in order to fall under this policy.
So, go, going back to the situation, i- if somebody tested positive and it, or, or tested without three days, they came back three days later, tested positive, we would count that as part of this program?
Sure.
Problem?
Sure. But if they test negative-
But if they take it negative, then is their sick time?
That's right. They gotta use their sick time, or if they're exhausted sick time, then they're gonna be out that day.
I mean, you know, and I'll just throw it out there. My own personal experience. My daddy's eighty-four years old. Was around somebody, didn't have any symptoms, but went and got tested on the way back from Rex, because he was going to get a heart valve replacement. We went and got tested. I was in the car with him. He tested positive. We got it back the day after Thanksgiving. He tested positive. I tested negative. He's eighty-four years old. His oxygen levels was ninety-seven, ninety-eight, the whole time got, went a little, what do you call it, oxy sense for things. Never had a fever, never had an issue. Had a valve replacement two weeks ago. Not a problem. But, I mean, you know, but that's, but he was positive. You know, and I was random, but I tested negative all three times. So, I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't quite understand how old, and I had the, the real deal three times. You know, so, I just, but I, I, you know, my main concern is the protection of the employees in our departments are, you know, uh, cause we're in the service business, you know, and-
It's all we can provide, the service.
And, and if, 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 but I do say that they need to have a ta, and I don't know what you can and can't make somebody do, I guess. Or, or be putting in a policy. If you're gonna, if you're gonna get paid by this, you got to get, you got to get tested.
Right.
You know, that's, that's just my, you know.
Um, Chair, um, only, like I said, uh, I don't have a problem with the testing. I wholly agree with the entire board. I do have a problem with, um, taking out number two. Because as a, a part-time employee, what's the maximum amount of hours a part-time employee can get without being full-time?
Uh, less than thirty.
Okay, so you're at ten under a full-time employee. But you're around a full, you may come in during that time around a full-time employee. So, it's, it's, it's still the same level of danger there, whether you're part-time or full-time. So, to take out part-time employees, I think is a, is, is, is not a good thing. You know what I mean? Like I said, I'm all for the testing and having to have a positive test. But to pu- to take number two out, I, I don't agree with that either.
I'm, I'm talking about number two on the-
No, oh, this, I thought Mr. Daughtry had said something about number two.
No, I was talking about two under item one.
Page ninety-one.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
Part-time employees would still be entitled.
Okay, okay, that's fine. All right, I mean, yes, okay, all right. Well, I'm, I'm in agreement. Thank you, guys. I'm sorry about that.
So how, how do we proceed with, with, do we add or?
So, what I would suggest is, you make a motion to adopt the policy, subject to removing, um, item one subsection two. You would re- remove item subsection two, and then also amend subsection three to add, and subsequently test positive for COVID-19.
Mr. Chairman, so moved by Andrew just said, because I will never get it.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Uh, any other discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I want to, uh, where did you, where did you read that this was effective and would end?
So, adopted this is right before the chairman signs adopted this, the fifth day of January twenty-twenty-one, and effective January first, twenty-twenty-one.
Yes, but I think it's back at you in the second paragraph, shall expire on March thirty-first. Unless otherwise extended by superseding federal or state law or Wayne County policy.
Right, so if congressional action takes place in two weeks that makes this void, then this policy doesn't mean anything. Cause far we know, they could come in and reinstate the FFCRA.
Okay, good.
And just for the boards, one thing I wanted to reiterate too. If they are on paid sick leave, they accrue their vacation the same way. We still play, pay the employee health, their share of the, their benefits, but they're still responsible for any dependents, anything like that, so, just for clarification.
Mr. Gurley, you can hit that question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Exactly what Andrew said.
Any other discussion? Now's your time. No other discussion. Lawton and Faber Show sign a right hand. All opposed. Mr. Chairman, can I make one note?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Daughtry admitted that the federal people were smaller than he was.
Well, everybody else is more than think that, so.
Now, Mr. Gurley, that's kinda carrying it too far now.
Well, I'll just tell you what he said. I'll listen.
Just say what he said.
Oh. Public comments. Do we have any public comments?
No, no one signed up, sir.
Okay, no public comments. Uh, Mr. Heinecke? I think, I, I think we got one more presentation that is not, is not on the agenda.
We do. I was gonna do that under my update. I did wanna invite Dr. Weiss in today, and one of the things that we have really been working on, and her department's been working on, also, I wanna thank Joel Gilli with Public Affairs and Aaron Stryker, is the rollout of our vaccine, and what steps we're going through, what I, what we're trying to do, what steps we're taking to get people registered. And, um, uh, we've been meeting on this weekly, and, and I appreciate the work that Dr. Weiss has done on this. But, uh, you should have gotten a press release by email yesterday about our first steps, but we did wanna publicly talk about that here today.
So I'll just sneak it out.
I'll need a copy of this mailed to me as well.
I'm sorry, Carol, I didn't do that.
I'll need a copy.
Yeah, definitely. I'm sorry I didn't do that.
No, 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 that's fine. As long as I get that after the meeting, it'll be great.
No problem. Okay, so, thanks for having me here today. I'm gonna be as quick as I can, following on what Craig mentioned, to give us an update on our, our vaccine, uh, plan. Now, I will tell you, uh, we are, state and federal government and us are putting down pavement as we're sprinting. And so, what I say here today may change in two days. It is that crazy right now. It's just crazy stuff. This is where we are today. We've had a lot of brain power put around this. We, we talked about it all day. We do it all day. We do it all night. We do it all weekend. So, I'll give you the very best and, that we have right now, and I really look forward to hearing what your thoughts are about that plan. Because as I said, it's quite fluid and could change based on your input. So, uh, vaccines. So right now, in the national landscape, there's kinda three main vaccines out there. Uh, the Pfizer one was sent to mostly to healthcare, so UNC Wayne got a bunch of those doses. That requires ultra-cold storage. The Moderna vaccine got sent to local health departments like ours, largely because you only have to put it in a freezer, and you don't have to have the ultra-cold, uh, temperature to store it in. So it's much easier for us to work with, because you don't have those, um, kind of facilities. And the last one is the AstraZeneca Oxford one from the United Kingdom. You might have heard about that. It's coming down the pipeline. And Lord knows, that might be coming to the United States as well, in the near future. The crazy part about all these vaccines is that the federal government is leading the development of it. And I gotta say, it is pretty phenomenal from a public health standpoint, what a great job they did. It's amazing. Warp speed worked, okay? The, the sad part about it is it's very hard for the federal government to determine what Wayne County needs to get all the time. The state puts in their request, here's what I'd like all the counties to get, and the federal government has to figure that out, tell these manufacturing companies, who then ship it to us directly. There's no middleman in the middle. Comes right from, ours comes right from Texas, from Moderna. So, it's a little bit in play. The, the good news is a vaccine is coming down the pipeline. Our administration did exactly what they said they would do. And now it's our job to figure out the logistics of the craziness around it, and the lack of kind of normal, um, processes we might have to manage it a little bit more closely. But we're, here's where we are, and here's what we're doing. So, we got our first shipment, uh, right before Christmas. We get an email usually a few days before it comes, saying it's coming. We don't know when it's coming. We don't know what day it's coming. So if it's a weekend, we have on-call staff all weekend, monitor the building to make sure nothing gets dropped off in front of the building, because UPS will never come in the building, ever, to a health department. So they just drop it off outside. Sometimes it's five fifty. It was five fifteen, in fact. I was the only one left in the office. And it showed up, and I was like, wow, there's the vaccine. So, you know, run out and get it, kinda thing. Um, we have got nine hundred doses as of yesterday, so that's pretty good. We're giving out right now between thirty and fifty a day, and we're gonna ramp that up very, very significantly this week. And I'll walk you through what that plan is, to get all of those doses out the door within the next eight to nine days. As I said, it's stored in the freezer. We gotta thaw it for two hours, and then we gotta use it that day. So a vial will have ten doses. So once I open a vial, right, and I got ten appointments scheduled, if only seven show up, I got three doses that I might waste. And that's where we're doing a lot of hustling around, calling doctors' offices, calling senior citizens. We have these running lists of people that could be eligible, that we could call at the eleventh hour, saying, I got three doses left. You wanna come get it? You gotta come get it now, now. We're trying really not to waste anything. And when I talk to you about what the state requirements are for doling it out, they're so crazy that I refuse to waste the doses. So I will manage that expectation myself. But if you look at the way they set up all these criteria for eligibility, it, it's, it, it needs to be a little bit more fluid than that, because we're not gonna waste doses here. I'll tell you that right now. Because eventually, if you wanna get it, and I've got a dose sitting on the counter that I'm gonna waste, I'm gonna give it to you. Even if your day is two days from now and not today, I'm gonna give it to you. Because I'd rather do that than throw it in the garbage, because that's just not what we do. Um, each person gets two doses, three to four weeks apart. And this is kind of the difference with what we think about with influenza vaccine. You have to wait like fifteen minutes after you get your dose. You gotta sit there and wait under clinical observation, because if you go into a rest or do something clinically downward, we gotta revive you. And when you go through an, you know, a flu pod, you know, the points of dispensing, you roll down your window, you pull up your sleeve, they give you the shot, you drive away. That's not happening here, because there's too much risk. With a brand-new vaccine, you have to sit there for the fifteen minutes, and you have to be watched by one of my staff during that time, or a clinical observation person. You can't just drive through on this one. It's not gonna work. So it makes the logistics of the delivery a little bit different than what we would have, let's say, for the flu vaccine. Okay, so this is a state prioritization of who gets it when. Now, as I wrote, as of December thirty-first, this changes probably every three days, four days. Right, and here we are, trying to chase the tail, chase the tail, to figure out where our folks in our community fit in all these little buckets with these timeframes. Knowing full well, the state and federal government are probably gonna change it in two days. Right, so I will walk you with the current, this is the current knowledge that we're operating under as of today. Phase one A, healthcare workers at high risk. You're doing clinical care, you're doing COVID testing, and you're doing cleaning. So I'm gonna give you a, an example of why someone like me would be a one A. Health directors who sit behind a desk are not a one A. But I am not a health director who sits behind the desk. Anyone who knows me, I am out the testing site two days a week, interfacing feet from people who tell me how sick they are. So I am now a one A. So not just by virtue of my title, am I a one A. I'm, by virtue of my function. So that's why we have like workers who clean buildings that have COVID patients. All of those people who have a high-risk interaction are one A, and they are the ones we're serving right now. So I have probably five hundred people in our county that are one A. And we'll talk about why or why not they're receiving their vaccines, because there is some reluctance there on that one A group. And we're seeing that at the healthcare system, we're seeing that in the county, and we're seeing it nationally. There's a lot of people who qualify under one A who have said, I'm not taking it. They originally said, I'm taking it, and then a third of them at the eleventh hour actually take it. Even though I've got five hundred names, I've only given out a hundred and fifty doses, right? So, you see this chart and see that. So we'll talk about that in a minute. Right now, this week, we are launching one B. And one B has three buckets. The first one is over seventy-five. And the second one is frontline essential staff and healthcare workers, and that light green box under there, you can see that's like everybody. That's like educators, police and fire. Although, if a fireman came to me and said, I'm dealing with COVID patients, I'm putting them in one A. Right, this is like how the craziness is. Because I'm not gonna take their job title alone. I'm gonna tell, they're gonna tell me what they do for a job, and then I'm gonna put them in the category. So there's a little bit of fluid there. But you can see, under one B, there's quite a bit of folks there. So we go to, then we go to one, uh, then we go to group two, you're over fifty, and we go to group three, and you're any age. You might remember a couple of weeks ago, there was all this talk about underlying conditions. Oh, well, you've got underlying conditions, how many you got, all that kinda stuff. This new rubric doesn't even mention them yet, and we're already into February. So that's what I'm saying. The criteria are changing. Now, if you came to me, and you're forty-nine, and you're a frontline worker, and you have underlying conditions, I'm gonna give you the shot. I just am. Because you have to be realistic, right? There's no bright line. We can have really unhealthy fifty-year-olds or forty-nine-year-olds, and really healthy ninety-year-olds. We have the senior center, and we were told like, I got eighty-five ninety-year-old people swimming every day, and riding their bike, and then I've got a fifty-year-old who's really, really sick. So this, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and I think in public health, we just try to use our judgment. So this is the state prioritization that we're operating under today. So you need to understand this one. This is what we call the framework, of who gets it when. Now, this is what we have decided to do to implement that framework. So we're starting, uh, this week with the group one of one B, seventy-five. We're, we plan to deliver eight hundred doses over the next eight to nine days, which is fairly aggressive. It's first come, first served. We have three off-site, uh, registration sites, the Maxwell Center, the Senior Center, and then one other location we hope to get in Mount Olive, to get a little bit more geographic distribution. Folks will come in, first come, first served, nine to twelve, let's say, the first two. They'll get an appointment card. They'll fill out their paperwork. They'll get, they'll get some help, especially if you're senior, you might need some help. Get, fill out your registration form, then you get an appointment card. It'll be either that afternoon, or the next day, or the next day after that. Within several days after you get your, you've registered, you'll get your appointment to come to the Health Department and get vaccinated. So you'll get your walkaway with your card, and you'll know, I'm gonna get that this afternoon at one o'clock at the Health Department. Right, and so we're gonna do that until we have set up all eight hundred doses to give out. We have to reserve a hundred and fifty, because we have a whole bunch of people who came in before we started this, that have to get a second dose. It's kinda complicated, but remember, it's just two doses, so we gotta kinda set that aside. So we have three to four nurses working in, um, immunization areas. They do two shifts, eight-thirty to twelve. We take a break for lunch. We do one to four-thirty. We try to manage people who walk in. There's a lot, a lot of people yesterday who just came in and said, I'm getting it. I'm not leaving. And we're trying to manage that. We're trying to make it so it's fair. But at the end of the day, I'm not gonna waste any doses either. So it's this yin and yang, okay? Police and, uh, traffic control, this is where Aaron Stryker's gonna help us out. Sheriff's Office makes sure that when we do these public venues, I can't have anybody charging the castle on us, right? I can't have any unruliness. I can't have any unruliness. For the senior center, for example, we may need to transport them in a bus to the health department. So it's kind of not fair to make them wait in line like that. So we'll have to work with each one of these centers to figure out what is the best approach to get everyone who's eligible in line when, when they can get in line. And it's not a perfect system. And as Craig mentioned, Joel Gilli and the other departments, we're working together, my office also in health communications, Celita Graham, we're working on communications, plan with stakeholder. We were at the Mark Colbert meeting the other night with pastors and very enlightening to hear the pastors' take on vaccination. But we're getting their inputs on how to reach what we call reluctant clients. As I said, of the 1A, we have over 500 names I put into the system for eligibility and we just can't get them to come. And we're finding that like at UNC Wayne, that all these doctors' practices have come to us, dentist's office, doctors, but we do them all, long-term care. My office does everybody. Outside of those two, outside of, we're even doing goshing because they don't have any doses yet. So they'll say, oh, I have a practice of, medical practice of dialysis and I've got 30 people, the physician will put them in and 10 people show up. Now I've got 20 doses thawed and I don't have 20 bodies to give it to because they decided only about a third are actually showing up. Now, we think on 1B, we're going to get a lot of people and we're not going to even have enough vaccine to handle 1B. We're just in 1A right now. So I'm giving you kind of what's going on right now with the first tier of people. But our thinking for 1B is we're just not going to have enough vaccine until the federal government, you know, parts the sky and the hand comes down and it shows up at my doorstep. And we don't, as Craig and I always talk about, we can't control when we get it. I can't go, hey, I need 600 more doses. The state and the federal government decide when and how much we get. And we, we can't control it. So we're just sort of responding to that with the very best strategy that we can come up with.
Mr. Chair, while we're on the slide, could I ask a question here for clarification? You're going to register people at the Maxwell Center on Wednesday?
Correct.
And that would be up to 300 doses?
Correct.
But you're actually going to deliver the vaccine at the health department? Is it going to be on the same day? Is it a different day?
So let's just take this, the Maxwell Center. You might get an appointment that afternoon, or you might get it the next day, or you might get it the next day after that. It'll be within the next three days, but starting that afternoon, what we've done is blocked out time at the health department saying, this is Maxwell Center time, leaving a little residual for walk-ins.
Sure. So, so people that qualify in that group would actually go to the Maxwell Center, the Senior Center, or the third location in Mount Olive and actually register?
Correct.
There you get a piece of paper that you're registered and they would give you a time to go to the health department to get vaccinated.
Correct. That way I can control the flow in and out of the office.
Sure, okay.
So I've got the four nurses doing six to eight patients an hour, over a six-hour tour, so I can handle over 100 vaccines a day. And we've been testing it. We've been kind of dry-running it internally with the 1A people, but we feel we can handle over 100 vaccines a day out of the office.
Now, if I could question a little more?
Yes, sir.
You say three to four nurses are working. That's on staff?
Correct.
That you have on staff. Are you needing more nurses if you have to expand this?
So...
Because at the rate of the number of doses, it would take four years to give vaccinations to everybody. I'm just, I don't know.
No, so I'm glad you brought it up because you preempted me.
Okay.
Here we go.
Go ahead.
So starting on the 19th, this is like, so now we have the 900 doses going out the door. If we got more vaccine between now and the 19th, why do I say the 19th? Because you have to get that second dose. So now I have to, the first people got it, I got to wait three or four weeks, I can get the second dose. I could get them back in, right? If I get more vaccine between now and the 19th, I can just keep opening the doors up and doing it. If I got like 2,000 doses, we may consider, and it is on here, an off-site vaccination site. Harris Teeter has come forward, said they want to help us out. CVS wants to help us out. Couple pharmacies want to help us out. We may open, Paula Edwards at the Senior Center said, I will host a vaccination event if you get a whole bunch of vaccine. And then we'll have EMS folks, she's got an RN on staff. We'll bring in other county resources if we get the vaccine. And this is where the rub is, I don't know when it's coming and how much is coming, right? So we have like a kind of a scalable plan across the county for both. We're going to keep it in the health department as long as it's managed, but if a whole bunch of doses come next week, like I usually get a day warning, like you're getting 400 or 300, and usually it's about that many. But if they say you're getting 3,000, we're going to have to now sync up one of those off-site vaccination sites that we've been working on, that we're planning around the idea that we're going to get a whole bunch.
Have you got the storage capacity to handle something like that?
We do. So we, I had to, when I became a provider, I had to fill out a very lengthy application about our capability as a local health department. And so we have refrigerators onsite, plus UNC Wayne handles our backup for us. We have a very good relationship with them. So we're, we definitely have the capacity now. The ultra cold storage, right? Remember, that's minus 70. I don't have that. It comes on dry ice, right? And then within 24 hours after you get that, you're supposed to get a shipment of dry ice, right? To hold you over until you give it out. I'm praying to God I don't get the Pfizer because that sounds like a problem to me, especially if I go off-site.
Take it to the hospital, yeah?
Right. So the idea is the state and feds are pushing to give Moderna to local health departments because they can handle it. We don't have ultra cold storage. We had to fill out a big survey about our capability. I didn't have it. And so I'm hoping they don't give it to me. And then that new one, the AstraZeneca one, is even easier to use. You can leave that room temperature. Right now I got to freeze mine and I do have enough freezers, but if it were room temperature, I clearly could leave it on the counter, you know, kind of thing. But we'll wait till that third vaccine even comes out. And we won't know which one we get.
So now I don't understand that, with the lack of communication on a situation like that, that looks like that could be very wasteful. If you, if you're planning on one thing and you get, I mean, you've got one of three options. I mean, you know, I mean, you've got really, really, really cold, freezing cold, and in room temperature.
Correct.
That, that lack of communication is kind of crazy.
And you're supposed to get the same kind of vaccine twice.
Yeah.
Although I'll tell you, with all the craziness, I don't know if you've watched the news lately of all the countries and states are all like, this is crazy. How do we even manage this thing, right? They're even saying, well, we could give them Moderna once and a Pfizer next. Like, I don't think we'll be doing that here. But I think people are getting, people like us who are trying to get the vaccine out the door, following the rules, because remember, there's a ton, a ton of scrutiny on us to make sure that this happens. I have to, I'm highly accountable every day for everything that goes on, right? So I got to do this, but I also got to get the vaccine out the door without a lot of warning and planning, you know, like from the fed and state.
Can I keep talking? I keep asking questions.
So let me just finish this if you would, because you preempted me, but that's okay. I'm going to let that happen.
I'm sorry.
So if we did open an off-site vaccination site, our thinking, it would be March and April. But I'll tell you, if we get 2,000 doses next week, it'll be next week. We're not waiting. We are not being flat-footed at this at all. And Craig has been convening us every Friday to talk about it, and we have been engaging a lot of the community activist groups and United Way and folks like that to help us think through how to do this better and how we can do this communication. How do we get champions in the community to roll up a sleeve and take it and say, it's okay for me, it might be okay for you? So why, I do want to explore this a tiny bit, why people aren't taking it. We don't have hard data, but this is what we're kind of hearing locally, statewide and nationally. First was, I don't want to be sick during the holidays in case I have side effects. So I might think about it later. So that was a big one, really, really big one. I don't want any side effects during the holidays, so I'll wait. I'll wait because I want to see how everyone else does. I'm going to check it out, and if that looks good and my friend had it and it's okay, I might try it. Number three, I don't trust the warp speed at which it was developed. That's a big one. I do not trust it is safe for me. And four, especially among the young people, under 40, I've come this far, I didn't get it, or my, I think I might have had it, so why would I bother getting the vaccine now? And those are kind of the four or five main objections we're getting to why people don't want to take it. And that last one is kind of like, I've come this far, I'm not going to get it thing. And it's largely among the young people.
Well, I can, I mean, I can understand the part, the reason I'm asking, the reason I said that is, we're not testing, I mean, we're not, all of our department, like the EMS or the sheriff department, they're, they're not getting it all at one time, are they? I mean, we're, we're staggered because we have, I mean, we don't know the ramifications or the side effects or, or either or. I mean, are we?
Yeah, the partners are staggering their own staff.
Okay, okay.
Same with me. I only give like, if I have maternal health, I'll do half the nurses once and then I'll wait and do the other, because I don't want everyone having side effects.
Got you.
But we are seeing very low side effects. The number one thing we're hearing is your arm's sore afterwards, your arm is sore. But beyond that, we haven't personally in my department had or witnessed anybody coming forward and saying they were real sick, so far. Maybe they didn't tell us, I don't know.
One more thing, going back to the 75 pluses, I mean, does the vaccine, does the vaccine and like some of the, and it ain't got to be elderly to do this, so make sure that everybody understands that, does it sound a lot of medication? Do they have, I mean, is it, do they not, do they not take their medication on stuff like that? Or is there any kind of, does anybody know? I mean, you know, like, you know what I'm saying? Because like when you go to the doctor or whatever, you don't take this or this?
What we've seen, and the state, I have to say, we have a very progressive state and for us getting out in front and communicating what they do know. And they're very smart. I have to admit, we have a very good state. And one thing they have said recently is, we don't exactly know how it impacts other vaccines and other medications you may be taking. And that may be a conversation with your healthcare provider if you're worried about that.
Well, I'm just saying for, just, just something for the elderly population to realize. I didn't know, I don't want them to get there and sign up and say, well, you were supposed to take X, so.
We don't have those, we don't know that list of what you can't take.
Okay.
You know? And I would, I would agree with you, probably, they are probably taking a bunch of stuff. That's probably why they need to sit definitely about 15, 20 minutes after they're vaccinated to make sure we don't have anaphylactic shock or some other reaction that we're not expecting. So, yeah.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
I've got one more question now.
Oh.
How long do you pay, how long do you test positive? Or can you test positive? I'm kind of going, kind of back to their policy. I mean, is it, is it 21 days? Is it 14 days? Is it three months?
How long you can test positive?
How long can you test positive? Who knows?
Months. Could be a day, could be four months. You hear these stories of people on the ventilator for nine months. There was a fellow just got out of the hospital after nine months. He was positive and symptomatic for nine months. There's people who are positive with no symptoms.
Well, that was dated, but I'd say they wouldn't let him have his surgery till 22 days.
It's novel for a reason. We don't know about, we don't know everything.
Okay.
But yeah, is that it?
I have a question for you. For those individuals that may have come down with COVID-19, the question that we would have is, do we need to take the vaccine?
Well, you can get it again. There's not, not like flu where you have a natural immunity after you've been, had the virus. So if you, if you'd like to take the vaccine, you could take the vaccine if you feel that you're not, not want to put yourself in a situation where you could get it again. You can get it again.
So in clarification, the antibodies that you would have from having it would wear off at some point in time?
I don't know that. I know you get antibodies, but they don't protect you from, they don't give you immunity 100% like the flu. We know that. You can get it again. Like you can get sick and the definition is if you recover for 90 days without symptoms and you get sick again, it's a new virus. That's a new, you got it again. So do you have antibodies in between? Probably.
So there's no recommendation in regards to maybe being on the end of the vaccination trail or on the front end or whatever?
I think if you meet the criteria and you'd like to take the vaccine, I would take the vaccine.
Good enough. So is there another, there's, of course, you can't believe what you hear on TV or anything either, but they're saying there's another strain or whatever, a more contagious strain of this? I mean...
Yeah, so like any virus, it's called the mutation. That's the DNA changes naturally in all of us. It, it changes naturally. And when the virus changes, it does that in order to sustain itself, like it, you know, survival of the fittest. But a lot of those mutations don't last. They don't last out in the virus. They stay in the virus and it causes what's called a variant, a change, when it makes the virus better, more transmissive, more virulent, right? And that new variant makes it more transmissive. So it can get transmitted much more easily, this variant right now. You might not get sicker, but it, it increases the spread by like three times. The thinking, and I don't know if the science is fully there yet, is that the vaccines protect you against that variant too at this point. But there'll be other variants. If, I could tell you, there's like 2,000 flu variants, 2,000, at least like thousands because DNA and viruses keep changing and they do that in order to stay in your body and do their thing.
Okay, one more question and I'll shut up. On the 300, 250 to 300 doses that you got, were you signing up at the Maxwell Center, the Senior Center, I think Mount Olive maybe? Have you got, I mean, is there things in place that, I mean, basically it's first come, first served, you know, and you've got it kind of laid out, how you going, how people going, where they going to come in at? I mean, they're coming in the building or they driving through or what's the?
Yes, sir. So we, uh, we have staked out each one of the locations and figured out where the stanchions are gonna go, where the police officer's gonna go, where the registration tables will be, where the people filling out the paperwork will be. So we have kind of a layout in our brain for each one of these locations.
But is it in cars, or is, are they going inside?
That's the thing. So we did, somebody said to us, "It might be easier if you register them out in the car." The problem is that when you need help registering, it's hard to work with someone in a car when you're standing there outside the car, you know what I mean? We might consider it, especially if they're disabled, but when we talked to Paula Edwards at the Senior Center, she felt like people wanted to come in, and she wanted to see them, so she could talk to them when they come in. But then the Maxwell Center might be a place where James Wade may say, "Well, it's better if you do it in their car." So we're gonna kind of wing it. We're gonna plan to have them come in, but if we have to go to the car, we'll go to the car.
The reason I say that, you might want to talk to Annie at the Board of Elections, because they use that as a...
They did.
So you can, you can kind of use their, kind of, kind of, I mean, people already kind of used to that in a way, so...
And that's exactly what he said, that a lot of the seniors wanted to stay in their car, so, well, listen, we're gonna do what we gotta do to get those people signed up. That's a good question.
Is that it?
Thank you.
And again, I appreciate Brenda doing this. We had a, uh, meeting yesterday afternoon and talked about the next steps of getting out the public information about to Maxwell Center and registration, and we're still working on a place with Mount Olive, so we're, we're, hopefully that'll be defined in the next day or two. But we did feel like it was very important for you to hear this information, very important for the public to hear as well, because I think the worst thing that somebody could hear, and we wanted to make sure that, that people knew this, is we're not sitting on vaccinations that are just sitting in the fridge, that there is a plan and that we are trying to get these vaccines out as quickly and as effectively and as fairly as possible.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
We need to take a 10-minute break.
Okay.
I mean, we've, we've been here a long time and...
I just need a real quick question, and that is, no funding, from what I'm seeing is our Health Department is really gonna be strained because they're the ones that are going to have to vaccinate Wayne County, and no federal dollars came down with these vaccination vials. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we're not getting any funding to provide this service?
I, I will, I will give you a, 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 I've kind of made an executive decision on some of this, is that, that we will spare no expense about getting the vaccine out as quickly as possible. I'll, I'll ask for forgiveness, um...
Well, that's what evidently we are, and that's why we kind of reserved our COVID funds for...
Right.
In case we had to do this, and it looks like that it's gonna be on us.
But, but we will get, we're, you know, what I've told Brenda is, whatever resource she needs to do her job and to get the vaccine out is hers.
Just let us know.
So that there is no, you know, don't worry about saying, "Oh, well, we need to check the," we'll find it. So the, the resource, we can, we'll, we'll make sure that the resources are there for her and, and her department to get the vaccine out.
Good enough.
Thank you.
Josh, chairman. We're gonna take a 10-minute break.
I think he just did.
Recession for 10 minutes, please. Dr. Wise.